Good morning. Hearing is called to order. We have presence of a quorum. It's a public hearing and a committee of the whole. The purpose of this hearing is to consider Bill Number 180108 and Resolutions Number 180121, 180122, 180124, and 180147. Mr. Christmas, please read the titles of the bill and resolutions.
Bill 180108, Inordinance Authorizing the City of Philadelphia to Enter Into Lease Agreements with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development, under which the city would lease to pay on a project-by-project basis certain land and facilities in the Fairmount Park system, recreation centers, playgrounds, and branches in the Free Library of Philadelphia system, and which would permit pay to sublease such facilities on a project-by-project basis to other organizations in conformity with the Economic Development Financing Law as amended, all under certain terms and conditions. And Resolution 180124, Approving the Rebuild Project Statement, Including Annual Budgets for Project Expenditures for Fiscal Years 2018 and 2019, A List of City Properties to Be Included in the Program, and a Master Economic Development, a Master Economic Opportunity Plan. And Resolution 180121, Appointing Adam Tataris to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District. And Resolution 180122, Appointing Donell McCoy to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District. And Resolution 180147, Confirming the Appointment of Marcel Pratt as City Solicitor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Christmas. I note that Bill Number 180108 and Resolution Number 180124 are being held today. Our first witness to testify for the remaining resolutions is Job Itzkowicz, Executive Director of the Old City Schools, I'm sorry, Old City Special Services District. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, all members of council. My name is Job Itzkowicz. I'm the Executive Director of the Old City Special Services District. I've circulated written testimony. I'm happy to rely upon that and take any questions unless you prefer that I read my testimony into the record.
Thank you. Any questions? This will be brief. Good morning, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Councilwoman. If you could just, please, speak to the composition of your board.
Sure. So, we're nominating two members today. Our board is largely made up of old-city business owners, property owners, and residents. We try to maintain diversity on our board, but it is representational of old-city, which is not the most diverse neighborhood in the city.
So, does that mean primarily, or does it mean primarily, small business people?
It's a variety. We have some small-business owners, so in today's resolution, we have a restaurant owner. We have boutique owners, art gallery owners, but we also have representation from some of our large rate payers. So, for example, Mary Hummel is the property manager with MRP Realty, and they own the Bors 325 Chestnut, the Bors Garage, and they are our largest rate payer. So, it's important that we have her on our board as well.
Approximate demographics of women?
I don't have that number on me. It is less than 50%.
Just a number. Give me an estimate.
Less than 50%.
Okay. And people of color?
We have two of 17 members right now who are people of color.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. No additional questions, no one else to testify on that. That being said, thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you, Council President.
And the next witness to testify is Marcel Pratt, the Acting City Solicitor.
Morning, Council President, Clark, and members of the Committee of the Whole. I am Marcel Pratt, the Acting City Solicitor for the City of Philadelphia. I have had the pleasure of serving in this role since March 9, 2018. I am grateful to Mayor James F. Kenny for proposing my appointment as City Solicitor, and appreciate the opportunity to testify today as I seek City Council's confirmation. Serving as Philadelphia City Solicitor is one of the highest privileges that a lawyer could ever experience. This is especially true for me, a lifelong Philadelphian. I'm a product of some of the city's proudest neighborhoods in North and West Philadelphia. Earned degrees from the University of Pennsylvania and Temple University Beasley School of Law, and established a successful legal career in a city known for its exceptional legal community. Now, in my proudest moment, I address the members of Philadelphia City Council seeking confirmation as the city's chief legal officer. I spent most of my legal career at the national law firm Ballard Spaar, representing clients in high-stakes commercial litigation and legal matters with significant financial ramifications. My practice focused on antitrust and competition law, nationwide class actions, false advertising, and pre-merger review before the Federal Trade Commission. However, I spent the first year of my legal career in the office that I now lead, the City of Philadelphia Law Department. During that year, which I spent in the Civil Rights Unit, I became fascinated with the sophisticated legal work of the entire law department and began admiring the talent and dedication of its attorneys and staff. In 2016, another extraordinary opportunity to serve the city presented itself. Former City Solicitor Sozi Pedro Tulante asked me to lead the law department's litigation practice as Chair of the Litigation Group, which comprises six units and 70 attorneys. In that role, I was responsible for overseeing the city's litigation matters and directly supervise some of the city's most significant court cases. For instance, I managed our defense of the Philadelphia Beverage Tax, appeared as counsel for the city in the so-called Sanctuary Cities litigation, and oversaw the filing of affirmative litigation to combat systemic problems in our city. During my time as a city lawyer, I have vigorously represented both City Council and the administration. I remain committed to providing high-quality representation, upholding the attorney-client privilege, and ensuring confidentiality over communications with each of my clients. As City Solicitor, my commitment to these principles will never waver. I have several goals for the law department, a few of which I will mention today. First, I will continue using affirmative litigation to serve the public policy goals of City Council and the administration, a commitment that I have already demonstrated in my short time as Acting City Solicitor. The city's use of affirmative litigation has been a powerful tool in addressing harms done to our city and in raising awareness around matters of public importance. I am thankful that City Council has been extremely supportive of our efforts to date. I welcome your input as I explore additional ways to use affirmative litigation to further our city's mission. Second, as the practice of law continues to evolve rapidly, I plan to ensure that the law department adapts accordingly and does not outpace. My efforts will involve increasing and institutionalizing legal training, exploring the use of technology to improve efficiency, investing in professional development, and increasing our intellectual capital through hiring diverse attorneys and staff. Lastly, I hope to raise the professional profile of the law department within city government and our local legal community. We are the city's law firm, so it is important for us to promote our areas of expertise and the important work that we do for our clients. I plan to accomplish this through increased marketing of our services to our city clients and encouraging our talented attorneys to be active members of the Philadelphia legal community. These efforts will not only enhance client service and professional development, but also assist with employee retention and job satisfaction. Thank you for the privilege of addressing you today. I would be honored to continue serving you and the rest of our city as City Solicitor. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have as you consider my appointment.
Thank you very much. Got a couple of questions. If you could just give us a brief, very brief, update on the soda tax litigation and the commercial real estate tax litigation, two outstanding issues.
Sure. On the beverage tax, the city's brief will be filed this Friday. The case is still pending before the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, and we have oral argument on May 15 in Harrisburg. And on the commercial reassessment litigation, right now, we're in the middle of discovery. And the timeline in the case currently takes us to a pre-trial phase in March of 2019. But there was an attempt by a group of commercial property owners to prevent the city from collecting tax for tax year 18, and that injunction was denied sometime in mid-February.
Is that primarily center-city-ish type of commercial real estate properties, or was it a broad?
A lot of those are in the mix, yes.
Primarily, okay. One thing, just for the record, I don't know why I'm saying this, but it's on my mind. I've just never believed that the city solicitor can adequately represent both the legislative and the executive branch. I just fundamentally don't know how that happened, in all honesty. But I do want to say that Mr. Tulante, in his time here, has done the best job of changing my mind. He's really balanced, so I ask you, and I know what you're going to say, obviously, given the fact that your fate stands within our hands this morning, but in all seriousness, I really, I really need to get a sense and a feel that you will continue Mr. Tulante's representation of both parties, although fundamentally, I don't know how you do that, but just give me a sense of your perspective on that, how you can serve two clients that are co-equal branches of government.
Yeah, and my role as head of litigation, I think I did it pretty successfully, representing both the administration and council. You know, I do think that there is, you know, a lot of opportunities for political conflict, so to speak, between the administration and City Council, but that's different from a true legal conflict. So, in a political conflict, it's not the solicitor's job to pick a side. The city solicitor is not a policymaker. City Solicitor is simply a lawyer, and the legal advice that I would give would say the same thing, no matter who was asking the question. Now, when a true legal conflict arises, we would get outside counsel for a city council. And again, those true legal conflicts are rare, but in my time as head of litigation, when they have arisen, I have gotten outside counsel for a city council, and the process was smooth, and I think everyone was satisfied with the steps that were taken.
Thank you for that response. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Boy, his fate is in our hands. That's...
It's drama morning.
Yeah, I got you. Actually, I don't have a question. I just wanted to go on record saying I've interacted with Mr. Pratt on a number of occasions, particularly on a bill, on this one, the administration and council are on the same side, so there's no issue there. And he's always been very thorough, knowledgeable. He's kept us totally up to date on what's going on, and just want to go on record saying I think I agree with your assessment of Mr. Tulante. He did a great job, but I think Mr. Pratt will also be an excellency solicitor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you. First, let me say congratulations on your very distinguished career.
Thank you.
You have much to be proud of, and we're pleased that you're here. I was struck by the last portion of your testimony where you stated that you want to, quote, "raise the professional profile of the office." Speak again as to why that is important and a couple of strategies you plan to implement to make that real.
Yeah, I think it's important because the law department has a very rich and diverse practice, and, you know, having been in the private sector and in the law department, I think, you know, folks in our city and the legal community really don't appreciate just the complexity and the sophistication of what we do. So, I think it's important for us to just generally make that known, and also to make it known to our clients, because we want our clients to know what we do, so if they have an issue, they can come to us. And I think we can do that through, you know, just plain old-fashioned increased communication, keeping you up to date on what we're doing, things like, you know, having marketing materials that outline what we do, our successes, and things of that nature, just to generally make sure that everyone knows what exactly it is that we're working on and what our capabilities are.
Mm-hmm. In the past, under other administrations, the City Solicitor's Office has been criticized for not being fair, and some might argue judicious, in spreading opportunities around and doing business with the City Solicitor's Office. And your predecessor was very intentional about leveling the playing field for people of color in law firms who ordinarily don't get the opportunity. So, speak to that, if you will.
Yeah, that's, that was, your assessment of my predecessor is correct, and as head of litigation, I did make a lot of decisions with regard to outside counsel, and, you know, diversity is always an important factor for us. It's something that we look at, it's something that we emphasize, and we don't have a favorite or go-to law firm. We always pick the best law firm or the best lawyer for the job, and that's, that's something that we're committed to, and that's something I don't plan on changing.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Good morning. I'll be brief, because in your response to Council President's question, you answered one, what was my, my biggest concern was, you're the role of the office of the law department, whether it was policymaking or that of law to, you know, to give us, it's not a yes or no, but the how and how we become legal compliant. And let me thank you for that, because I think that's hugely, hugely important, and I think that's one of the ways you stay out of picking sides between the executive and the legislative branch, which are both your clients. The one area, you know, all roads lead to the law department, right? And every time there's something bottleneck, it's the law department. It's sitting at the law department. I'm sure you guys hate hearing that, right?
Yes.
So, speak to me. Speak to me about the administrative processes that you, in the short time you've been there, you've seen that can be streamlined, the issue of how many trees do we really got to kill to get to a point to conform contracts and speed up the business that we do here in the city.
Yeah, I think, and I can talk more about this during my budget testimony, but, you know, it does take a long time in a lot of situations to get a contract conformed. I know at the law department, we have decreased the amount of time that contracts spend at our step, at our stage of review, and, you know, we're still looking at ways to get that down shorter. And then we also want to work with some of the departments who negotiate their own contracts just to make sure that they can help us out by speeding things up and getting things to us in a timely fashion. But I'm certainly committed to looking at our processes internally just to make sure that we're doing everything that we can do.
Thank you. I mean, we've been having procurement reform discussions, and I welcome you to that discussion about how we set some standards. I think sometimes the level of discretion that's allowed complicates the situation in different departments, and that's why we don't have the consistency in the aspirational goals that we set here, whether it's participation, inclusion, and all those other places. So, I welcome you. I congratulate you. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Me too.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning.
Good morning.
You mentioned in your testimony, you referenced your previous role at the law department as Chair of the Litigation Department. And particularly for the benefit of those Philadelphians who are watching, who are not here, you talked about having to secure outside counsel when there is a potential conflict. And last year, the Ninth Councilmatic District was presented with such a conflict relative to land use in the district. And when we went to the law department with the support of Council President Clark and our colleagues, we needed your leadership and support to help us get through that process. Can you just, for the benefit of the public, explain why the decision-making regarding fairly acknowledging when there is a conflict inside the department and making the decision to get outside counsel is extremely important, because sometimes the rulings that you are challenging are the city of Philadelphia's ruling? So, for the benefit of the public, why don't you just explain that for us?
Yeah, it's a, it's a pretty straightforward answer. That was a situation where the administration through LNI took one position on a matter, and City Council had an idea of what was in the best interest of the city through what was happening in your district, and it was a true legal conflict. There was no way that the law department could represent both the administration and City Council, so we had to get outside counsel.
Is that, is it usually always that cut and dry?
Not always, but in that situation, that was one where it was pretty clear from where I sat that we needed outside counsel. There was no representing both at the same time.
Got it. Let me also just lend my voice to the choir in saying that I'm honored that you are about to join the ranks. Somebody's watching, and they're saying, "We heard you all talk about his academic credentials and his legal experience, but he looks too young." He looks too young. For the record, I just want to be very clear that your youthful appearance is no different than that of Mark Aroncheck, Stephanie Franklin Suber, our own Sozi Tulante, who had the great honor and privilege of being named City Solicitor for the City of Philadelphia. So, we wish you Godspeed and know that you will continue to serve the law department in our city well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to congratulate you and just to thank you for taking on this very difficult, but very important job. Some would say a thankless job. That's what makes it a high honor to the entire law department, who fight hard for our city, fight for what they believe in. They have great leadership, and I have great confidence in you. And in my time interacting with you, I have been very impressed with how you handle yourself, not just as a lawyer. I have no doubt about your legal abilities, but as a, as a person who acts with great wisdom, and certainly puts me at ease, whether you agree or disagree with me, that you will do all things very fairly. And I wanted to also publicly thank Sozi Tulante, who is sitting in the audience, for his wonderful service, and I would guess to say some fantastic mentoring. So, good luck to you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to add my voice to the chorus of people who are congratulating you on the appointment, God willing, you're about to receive. Council President has been consistent in his concern about how to represent two clients. I will remind him that when we had the Carnegie Mellon issue with the libraries, our bed and averages in bed because we won that case and were able to save the libraries. But I wanted to thank you and your department for all of the times in different capacities, whether it was minority business enterprise counsel, or whether it was you representing our office again in other matters, which we won't talk about. But to say always the folk over there were professional, they aren't there for the pay, obviously, because they could probably do better in the private market, and I want you to understand that we are thankful for having that representation and look forward to your leadership in guiding them. Last big issue we had with you guys was how to do conflict counsel in those cases where, you know, defendants have to be represented. And we just appreciate how well you go about your business, and we think you're going to follow in a long line of city solicitors that have defended this city, and wish you well.
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate that.
That does not mean we are giving you more money for the department.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I was hoping that would change.
Good move, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to congratulate and thank his predecessor as well for his service. And I want to say, this is the first city solicitor where I had so many people approach me to say what a good person he was and what a good role he was and what a positive thinker he is. I really liked his response to your concerns about what happens when we may be on different sides of the fence, and so I only have to say, when he turns 21, we can come back and go with him. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Tobinberger.
Thank you, Council President. And in saying what Councilwoman Blackwell has just said, some have actually urged me to ask that you show your driver's license to see if you're actually eligible to serve. I want to congratulate you on a, on a really distinguished career. I really want to thank you for what you've done with the law department in your short time as acting director, acting solicitor, and I also want to state very clearly that your answers to the questions posed by my colleagues have been answered to my complete satisfaction. And lastly, I also want to really thank former city solicitor Tulante for his service to this city and to this body as well. And I think, in all seriousness, even though you look very, very young, I think your youthful experience, your youthfulness, will add to this office, and I look forward enthusiastically to working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I also want to echo the comments of my colleagues in congratulating my friend Sozi Tulante on his term as City Solicitor, and also congratulate Marcel Pratt in this new role. You truly are a man that achieves in every field of human endeavor. Some of the people in this room understand that means that you wear the crimson and cream colors as a member of Capal Masaiya Paternity Incorporated. But on a more serious note, I know recently, we had some conversations regarding the recent issue regarding the census, and I know from our conversation, you anticipate working with Attorney General Josh Shapiro, who was signing on to litigation suing Trump administration regarding the new citizenship question on the census. And I wanted to get some perspective from you about that initiative and other initiatives where the City Solicitor's Office will be proactive and doing a firm litigation that would benefit the citizens of the City of Philadelphia.
Yeah, that was a case where, you know, we saw that a number of state attorneys general were getting together in some cities, and we thought it was important for us to join because the census issue is one that will, if that question is allowed, could have grave consequences for our city. So, it was important for us to use our litigation capabilities to make sure that that doesn't come to fruition. And so, that case is obviously still pending, and I'll keep you updated, because I know that was an issue that you were interested in. As far as other types of cases, you know, we're always monitoring what's going on. We have a couple of cases in the pipeline right now that I can't talk about publicly, but, you know, we're always open to new ideas, and as I said in my testimony, I welcome any ideas that anyone from City Council may have about things that we can look into. You know, affirmative litigation ideas, you know, they, they come to us a lot of times through concerns that we see from other folks within the city. So, you know, I welcome counsel to that conversation.
Thank you, Council President. Elder would be proud.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. I also want to join everyone. Congratulations to you, and also to Sozi, because I will say that, for me, and I think many of us, very proud to have Sozi as our solicitor. He made us proud to be involved in government, and I think that's very important. So, he's, he would be a great mentor, and I'm sure he is. And I guess the only thing that's coming down the pike, I don't know if you want to comment on it at all, is, and we noticed this, Western Pennsylvania legislator introduced some legislation in the state that could affect our beverage tax situation. I don't know if you have any thoughts or comments on that, but I was just wondering what you're, what you thought about that.
Yeah. So, yeah, we are aware of the legislation, and we're still, still looking at it, and, you know, we have to figure out what's the best course of action legally to approach it, but right now, it's, it's too early for me to say in this hearing what, what exactly our plans are.
Good. Thank, thank you, Councilman. One last question, and I believe we have one witness on this particular nominee. One of the prior city solicitors at their confirmation hearing indicated that they believe that a confidential opinion sought by a council member on a particular issue should be public. That was in the confirmation hearing. The confirmation hearing was abruptly recessed, and later on, when we reconvened that afternoon, that particular nominee came back and said that should not be made available to the public, and was an issue with respect to the public's right to know or the public's need to know. What's your position on that, if a council member asks you for a confidential opinion about a particular matter that either is before us or soon will be before us, in terms of making that available to the general public without the consent of that particular council member?
A request for legal advice from a city council member is confidential. The fact that the request was made is confidential, the content of the communications is confidential. I don't know any other way to treat those types of communications. I think... I think that's the hallmark of the attorney-client privilege, is to protect confidentiality over communications with your client. So even when you approach us for advice and you don't say the magic words of confidentiality, it's assumed by us that that's what you want, and we will never share the content of legal advice that we give to you or our communications with you, with the administration, or even with another City Council member, unless you give us the permission to.
Okay. Thank you. I had to ask that question. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for the meeting we had last week, and it, it was good, saved us a lot of time here, but also made it easy for me to enthusiastically vote for your confirmation.
Thank you.
I, I believe you get it, and I don't think it's just your background in a large firm. I, I think it's your just understanding of how clients and, and lawyers work together. But I know you fully understand that the person that appointed you, Mayor of Philadelphia, is one of your clients and her 17 other ones sitting in this room, and that's all I needed to know, and you've more than satisfied my concerns, so good luck.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. I believe we have one witness that would like to testify on this nominee. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mr., good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Morning.
Testifying, good morning. On Resolution Number 180147, I have the proud honor and privilege of serving as the President of the Barristers Association for Philadelphia. I will ask that the members here please stand.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Just to make sure you state your name.
My name is Charles Gibbs, G.I.B.B.S. Mr. Pratt, Mr. Chairman, is more than a lawyer. He's a lawyer's lawyer. He is a person who we have held in high esteem. We are asking collectively, as an organization and as lawyers all around the city, for you to unanimously confirm him. He will be one of the best City Solicitors. I wish Mr. Tulante wasn't here. He will be the best City Solicitor that this city has ever had. We ask that you support him, and we are proud of him as one of our members. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Okay, that completes our witness list and our questions. And that concludes our public hearing on the Committee of the Whole. We will now go into our public meeting, and it chair recognizes Councilmember Heenan for a motion to report out of committee with a favorable recommendation, Resolution Number 180121, 180122, and 180147.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly second, that Resolutions Number 180121, 180122, 180147 be reported from this committee with favorable recommendation. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and Resolutions 180121, 180122, 180147 will be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation at our next session of council. That concludes the business of the committee. Thank you all very much. I'm going to ask the members, because we have a brief presentation by the McDonald's Corporation across the street, i.e. caucus room, so we can please go next door.